I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is my mic on? Yes, good. All right, we have one board member, Rob Brown, who called in and said he's not going to make the meeting, and I think we have another board member who's on the way. We will proceed with recognitions. Nick, who's going to be addressing these? Sandy?
Yep, I'll take it.
All right, very good.
And we're going to flip the first two. Oh, here she was. I heard from Dad, she got caught by a train. All right, so Hannah, if you would make your way up to the microphone, that would be great. I know we're not giving you much time to breathe here, but... The Prudential Spirit of Community Award represents the United States' largest youth recognition program based solely on volunteer service. The award, now in its 23rd year, is conducted by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Since the program began in 1995, more than 120,000 young volunteers have been honored at this local, state, and national level. This year, Hannah Burns, a junior at Hudson High School, was named one of six distinguished finalists. Congratulations, Hannah. So if you'd come up to the mic and you can adjust that, bring that down. Will you tell, I don't want to share your project. Can you tell the board a little bit about your project, please?
Sure. So about a year and a half ago, I decided I was going to pursue my Gold Award project for Girl Scouts, and I wanted to do something really big and something just really different for a Gold Award project. And I came across a fitness park in Eau Claire, and I just thought it'd be super cool to have in Hudson. So I started talking with the city council, and it kind of went from there, and I organized a team and worked at the Parks Board really closely to find a perfect site for it, and it's right down by the lakefront, right by the beach house. And then I raised about $38,000 to actually install the park and pave it, and they'll be doing landscaping this spring, but it's just been a great project, I guess. I've worked with a bunch of different organizations in Hudson, and it's been a great experience.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for Hannah? Comments?
Opening up to board members, I guess I can speak first in that note of your project for a while since you came to our Rotary Club and spoke about it, and also the grant process and everything through the city. You got some city help as well, correct? So just great job on being able to raise that kind of funds and see a project all the way through completion. Great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to ask the young lady, what are you going to do next? Congratulations, that's very nice.
Thank you. Well, I'm actually applying for the Air Force Academy right now, and I'm just...
See what happens.
Yeah, see what happens.
But you still have one more year.
That's a worthy second goal.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, Sandy, I agree with Sandy. What she just said is that that's a great opportunity as well, and I think if you put your mind to it like you did with this project, that say that they'd have another option, you have another option for post-secondary school, but great job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have our National Merit Finalists. I'll ask them to come up to the microphone. Five seniors from Hudson High School were named 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program finalists. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. This journey for these students began back in October of their junior year when they took the PSAT. This past fall, they were notified they qualified as semifinalists. They went on to compete, complete a robust application, and were notified in February that they all advanced to finalist standing. Quite an accomplishment, congratulations. Please introduce yourselves and share with us what your plans are after high school, please.
I'm Cal Mergendahl. Post-high school plans, still kind of working those out, sending applications. Right now, I'm kind of planning on going to the University of Minnesota-Morris because they do some pretty good stuff with financial aid for people who get the National Merit Scholarship, but I'm also still kind of waiting to hear back about a scholarship so I can go spend a year studying abroad in Germany. All right, well, I'm still also kind of working stuff.
Yep, you can adjust that, yeah.
I'm also still working on some college stuff.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm Nick Hanson. I'm still working on college stuff, and it looks like I'm going to University of Minnesota-Twin Cities, and I'll be studying either computer science, mathematics, or chemistry.
I'm Shayle Wallene, and I'm going to go play basketball at St. Thomas next year, and I don't quite know what I'm going to study yet, but I think something in either math or business.
I'm Ben Landry, and I'm still, like the other two back here, waiting on a couple of applications for college. I'd like to go to the University of Notre Dame for a major in physics, but if I don't get accepted there, I'd like to go to UW-Madison.
Excellent.
And Thomas is going to...
Yeah.
Anybody know where, what he's planning on doing?
I think he wants to go to the school in England.
Okay.
All right, comments or questions again from the board?
I have a question. So I was doing a little bit of reading about this whole process, and it sounds like some students, this is a very intentional end product, like they start thinking about planning, studying sophomore year. I mean, I'm curious if this was a very intentional thing for you all, or if you took the test, it worked out well, and here you are, kind of. How'd that work out? Whomever.
I think I can speak for most of us, this was not intentional. I didn't realize the PSAT was like connected to this at all, but I was just alerted to it afterwards.
For me, it was, my dad was like, hey, you should take this test because you can get this scholarship thing, and then they'll give you some more money. I'm like, that sounds like a pretty good deal. And hey, it worked out pretty nice.
I wasn't going to sign up for it, but then my counselor, Ms. Jameson, told me I should, and I think I signed up like a day or two before it happened.
Really, the same works for me. Same thing.
And yet, these five students, I think it's less than 1% of all those that are this far, so pretty amazing students, for sure.
Well, thank you all for applying and for your efforts, and you do Hudson proud. Every year, we get at least some National Merit Scholar finalist, and so getting five in one class, it says a lot. Yeah, go ahead. No, that's all I had.
I would just tell you that even though it wasn't intentional, you all got here, and it's going to look outstanding on your first job application. Don't forget to include it.
That's right.
It's a big deal.
And I'd like to hear that some are looking exactly how it ties in with financial aid, which is really important, so that's good. And good luck to you and your endeavors, and congratulations.
Next, we'll have Dan Wyland from the high school come on up. Hudson High School has been named a Project Lead the Way Distinguished High School for 2017-18. Project Lead the Way is a nonprofit organization that provides a transformative learning experience for both teachers and students through teacher training and resources. Congratulations to our PLTW Engineering, Biomedical, and Computer Science staff. With us this evening is Dan Wyland, a Technology and Engineering Education teacher at Hudson High School. Dan submitted the application and has put together some of our impressive data to share with you this evening. Congratulations, Dan and team.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening. So yeah, if you want to go to the next slide there, thank you. If you want to go full screen, it might help, yeah. Yeah, if you just click through it, there it is, Tim. Thank you. All right, so to be a distinguished school, this is the first year that they went ahead and did this. They used to do it an old way where people from the different states would go in, and they'd see if you were a certified school, and you had to kind of go through a whole process by people from the state, and they did change this year at the national level. So they, what they did was, there's three stipulations here. So for one, to be a certified school, you had to have at least three PLTW courses in any pathway, and right now, they have the engineering pathway, the biomedical, and the computer science, which we've started all three pathways at the school. Our computer science is the youngest one, so it's the smallest, but grand total, we have eight. Engagement then, so there's two different ways you can get it. Having at least 25% of your students in the whole building participate in Project Lead the Way, or, which is where we fall into in the second half, of those who are in it, at least 33% take two or more throughout their high school career, and we're at around 61%. And we're probably more like kids are taking three or four of that 61%, rather than just taking at least two. It's a lot that they do. You know, typically, if they go into it, they're going through it. And then the last one, two different things there. Either 70% are earning at least a proficient or higher on our end-of-course exam, kind of like an AP exam, or at least 10% are doing an AP PLTW student achievement, which they started doing last year. We haven't done a lot of that yet because we, it was really brand new, so I did Guinea Piggott with one student to see how easy it was, so we'll get a lot of kids doing it now. But we went on the first half, so we have at least 79% that are getting proficient or higher. And proficient means the exams are scored on a one-to-nine scale, so that means you have to score at least a four or higher, so that means you're doing very well, and the students are understanding and grasping all the curriculum and everything. So we actually, if you click again there, Tim, I threw on the bottom down there, proficient is four. We actually average about a five, five and a half, so our students are doing really well in all the different pathways on our end-of-course exam there. So we met all that, and so we earned distinguished status for the 17-18 school year. So only one of seven high schools in Wisconsin have earned this status. We're only one of, as you can see, 133 high schools in the nation, and only one of 340 schools in the United States. And if you click again there, if we were looking at over 10,000 schools in the country have Project Lead the Way, and we're only one of the 340 schools, not bad for us, so we're looking pretty good here in Hudson. Just to kind of walk you through like what we've been doing here, so I looked back at, you know, when we started and where we've been here. So we've been doing this since '09-10 was our very first year, and we had just one class that was Introduction to Engineering. We had 61 students. And now, in the Engineering pathway, we have four classes, and we have 167 students this year that are enrolled in just the Engineering pathway. And then we added the Biomedical pathway there in '14-15, which we started just with one class. They're part of the Healthcare Academy, and now they have three classes, and they've got 156 students, and I think Sandy, I think we're opening it up, that's outside the Academy next year or something like that. So more kids will get a chance to take that class. And then our Computer Science, like I said, that's our youngest one. So we also add that in '14-15, and we have just one class still right now, but we did add some in the middle school too, so actually, starting next year, we'll foster that growth, and you'll see a lot of kids coming in with a lot of experience, so of course, that pathway's going to grow. And then I just think I just threw up a, oh yeah, if you click ahead here, so I just kind of wanted to point out, these are all the different classes that we have in our pathways here. So in Engineering, we do the introduction, the Principles of Engineering, the Digital Electronics, and the Engineering Design Development. I've taught all four of them, but I don't teach the introduction anymore because as we've grown, I've, I'm just taking over and doing a lot of the upper-level ones. I've got plenty of students, keep me busy there. And then we've got a great couple of teachers, Erin Meyer Williamson and Jamie Holam, who are teaching the biomedical. Derek Schack and Lance Hovland teach also in Engineering with me too, so I want to make sure I mention them. But Jamie and Erin are teaching the biomedical, and then Hiba Otis is teaching our Computer Science. We've got a great group of teachers that are teaching all these courses here, really providing the kids with a lot of experiences and a lot of great hands-on learning here. And then I think I threw up this, yeah, this is some pictures, this is kind of showing what we're doing here. We're creating an engaging classroom. Oh, I looked too fast there. It's all right. We're trying to do real-world problems. You know, with the Engineering one, right now, we've got a capstone course, and we're going to be adding soon, hopefully, to the Biomedicals, if they can get their own kind of capstone experience, and eventually with Computer Science, you know, they're getting these hands-on, they're communicating with engineers in the community and different professionals and technicians, so it's really great that they're collaborating, that they can have these experiences. So I think my last slide here is just some pictures of some of the great things that the kids are doing, and whether it's Engineering or the Computer Science or the biomedical here, you can see a lot of hands-on stuff, things that we're doing with 3D CAD down in the corner, you can see that they're getting to work with like, you know, parts of animals, and they're doing, looking at the anatomy here. I got kids in the bottom that are coding and putting together remote-controlled cars, we're running through obstacle courses and trying to problem-solve here, so it's a lot of fun, okay? So I just wanted to share with you what we're doing, and hopefully that we continue getting distinguished status every year. We actually have to try to apply for that every single school year, so hopefully, we can earn it every school year, and I, I'm confident that we will.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Sue.
I guess one of the lines towards the end that I really like is that we're empowering our students to apply and develop in-demand skills by exploring the real-world challenges. I think that's so smart in our school system, and problem-solving and critical thinking, and I always love to see the word "doing it creatively" because, you know, at least when I was growing up, you didn't think outside the box. I like thinking outside the box, and I know there are other disciplines in our school and clubs and activities that all are on the same trajectory of creative and creative problem-solving and thinking critically, so I like where we're going, and congratulations to you and your students.
Thank you. And there are questions or comments, but again, well done, and thanks for bringing great recognition to our school, saying that we're, based on the math I was doing in my head there, it looks like top 3% of all schools that are participating in Project Lead the Way, and then top 2% in Wisconsin, so we're right up there in elite status, so I appreciate your efforts, and thank you also for mentioning your colleagues, the other teachers that are involved in the program.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, did Thomas, did I see Thomas walk in? Come on up. Other finalist is here. Come on up. Your colleagues, your classmates already came up to the microphone. This is our other National Merit finalist. I gave them a little background. So would you introduce yourself and tell us what your plans are after high school, please?
I'm Thomas Laraya, and after high school, I intend to hopefully attend the University of Edinburgh in Scotland.
Oh, my.
In mathematics and physics.
All right. And I know one of the questions the board has was, when you're a junior and you made the decision to take the PSAT, was that intentional in hopes to get to this semifinalist, finalist stage, or was that not in your thinking at the time?
I wasn't really aware of it, but here we are.
Here we are. It's quite an honor. Congratulations.
And did you do better on the SAT, did you take the ACT or the SAT?
I took both.
You took both of those plus the PSAT?
Yes.
All right. And did you do better on the other test than the PSAT? Do you know?
Yeah, I think I got a pretty good score. I was, I was pretty happy with it.
Well, getting into the University of Edinburgh, are you accepted there?
Yes.
All right, great. And I think, if I know, they've had some distinguished alumni in the area where you're going in, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Do we have one more recognition? And that's turning over to Erin, okay?
Yep, so this year, seven school counseling programs met or exceeded the requirements for Program of Promise Award. They received an award at the Annual Wisconsin School Counselor Association Conference in Madison on February 22nd. The Program of Promise Award is the highest recognition that a comprehensive school counseling program can receive from WSCA. So tonight, we welcome Kim Osterhues, Principal of Willow River Elementary, and Sarah Fleer, School Counselor at Willow Elementary, to kind of speak more about what achieving that level entails and the process. Welcome.
So this was our second year at Willow River receiving this award, and it's based on what's going around here. This is the WISC PAR, the Wisconsin School Counseling Program Accountability Report, and so these are submitted to the state in October, and then run through, our peers review it, and it's on a rubric, and so anyone who receives a certain cut score above is considered a Program of Promise. And so this year, we were one of seven, which is really exciting. What's great about it is that it says a continuous improvement document, and that's exactly what this is. After doing it last year, I wanted to continue to improve our program at Willow. I am very fortunate to work with an incredibly supportive administrator and staff. I can't do all of this without the support of them, so I'm very lucky to work in a, in a building that helps support the school counseling program the way that it does. And so on the front, you'll see Principal's comments, and then school climate and safety. We all know that if students feel safe and connected at school, they will learn, they will thrive. And then on the back, our, the school counseling is kind of divided into three different domains, the academic, social, emotional, and career domain, so then this is data showing what the program has done in those three domains. And then it ends with program goals, and so one of these I actually adopted for my SLO this year. I'm really looking at closing the gap behaviorally, and then also looking at our gender gap and how our boys are receiving more behavioral referrals than our girls, and so we'd like, we're working together with the staff to change that, so, yeah.
The first sidekick.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
By, by closing the gender gap, how, what would be the end goal for that?
End goal, we'd like, right now, it's about 80/20, so our boys are receiving 80% of our behavioral referrals compared to our girls. And so I did a lot of research last summer, just kind of looking at how boys learn, different things that we need to be maybe doing on the playground, because that seems to be the area where we see this a lot. And so between research and then having conversations with our teachers as well, what's great is that we have a lot of things in place in our classrooms to have modifications and accommodations for many different learners. And then I also am working with the UW River Falls, we've got a graduate level group that is looking at our data and is going to be doing some peer review studies to kind of give us some ideas of how we can help our boys with behaviors and that type of thing, so. Okay, thank you.
Right, and I noticed that it's specifically for the Willow River Elementary School, and is it possible to have more than one elementary school from the same district?
Yes, last year, I was one of three. So last year, Hudson Prairie received one, as well as EP Rock, so, yeah.
All right, very good. And then this report is, is that part of this?
That's what I submitted. Yep, so what you're looking at is what I submitted to the state, and then they ran it through a rubric with several of other counseling peers across the state, and then it made the cut score for the Program of Promise.
Right, this looks familiar anyway, from having seen it before, but it's great to see that we're making progress from year over year. In some cases, pretty dramatic progress, so that's great. Sue?
Just one quick question. When you, what you submitted, was it in this specific format, or did it, was it a, you know, like a PowerPoint, or what was the format? I'm just curious.
It's exactly what you're looking at. That's what I submitted, and then it included like an application form with, you know, my principal's name and things like that.
So two pages, this data. Wow, that's impressive.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Well, thank you for following through on this project, and your intention is to do it again for next year?
Yeah.
All right. Well, keep the recognitions coming, we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'm proud to represent at the state level, thank you.
Thank you. All right, always good to get recognition for our district, and very worthwhile to spend the first 25 minutes of the meeting from our students all the way to our faculty and our different programs and our counselors. Just a great job all around. So I understand we have some citizen requests to speak about non-action items, is that correct?
Yep, and they're on the way to the microphone.
All right, do we have like?
Nope, not anymore.
Okay. All right. So are you, do you have, we try to give them the...
I said three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes, all right. I just want to make sure that we have expectations set there.
So go ahead. Hi, my name is Gem, and this is Tank. We are with Bikers Against Child Abuse. We have been in the area for about four years. We've actually helped a lot of kids in the Hudson area. We're based out in Richmond. So if you see kids running around with a cut kind of like ours, they've probably been helped by our organization, well, actually, they have. We give them the cut to just kind of symbolize that they've become part of our family. We're an international 501(c)(3), and I guess the best way to tell you anything about us is to read our mission statement. It's actually on the back of the brochure that I gave you, and just because I'm nervous, I'm actually going to read it off of there. So, Bikers Against Child Abuse are BACA, exist with the intent to create a safer environment for abused children. We exist as a body of bikers to empower children to not be afraid of the world in which they live. We stand ready to lend support to our wounded friends by involving them in an established, united organization. We work in conjunction with local and state officials who are already in place to protect children. We desire to send a clear message to all involved with the abused child that this child is part of our organization and that we are prepared to lend our physical, emotional support to them by affiliation and our physical presence. We stand at the ready to shield these children from further abuse. We do not condone the use of violence or physical force in any manner, however, if circumstance arise such that we are the only obstacle preventing a child from further abuse, we stand at ready to be that obstacle, so.
Okay.
That's it.
And so this is...
Very short and sweet.
All right, mostly, mostly an awareness program.
Yep, it's, well, we're looking to spread awareness. Like I said, we've been around for about four years, and we hear it all the time that a lot of people just don't even know we exist, and we were just kind of given the suggestion to come to a lot of the school board meetings and let you guys know who we are, and, you know, let you know we're here. If you guys need help with any events or anything, we do a lot of kid events, we do a lot of fingerprinting, we've done some safety nights at Unity Schools.
All right. Well, and Dr. Owlet and I are on, and so is Bruce Hanson, our Vice President, all on Rotary, and we had, your group gave like a half-hour presentation. I know there's quite a lot of details and questions, but our format here just doesn't allow us to get into a lot of detail, but I appreciate, you know, spreading the word. I think it's definitely a worthwhile cause, unless there's any other comments from other board members? Carrie?
You've been present in Wisconsin for four years, or nationwide?
Nationwide, we've been present since 1995. It was started in Utah.
I've read some things about the organization, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have other requests to speak about non-action items? Okay, very good. Moving on to superintendent's report. I believe you have a construction update, is that right, Dr. Owlet?
Yeah, well, it seems to be what we do is construction. So, construction update, just to kind of give you a heads-up of what's going on. It's always interesting, when I get ready to start talking, the room kind of clears, so I don't know if anybody else noticed that.
Only on, when we have lots of recognition.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's, everybody else at the tables is paid to be here, but, so a couple of things I want to touch on with construction, and then point, point to where our meeting's going to be held, the next work session will be at the high school, but the construction of the high school is really starting to turn, turn around well. Spring break was a huge amount of work got done over spring break. If you haven't had an opportunity to be at the high school, in two weeks, we'll have our board work session at the high school, and what has happened is we've opened up more of the common space, so that area out in front of the auditorium, about another 40 feet has opened up, so we can use it. It's not completed, but we needed that space because that space out in front of the main office where the trophy cases are, that is now all under construction. Actually, there's, the bathrooms in front of the gym, those no longer exist. They've all been demoed already, just a lot of the demo work's already taken place. The outside of the building's really coming along, as you can see, the stone is going up, the windows are going in. We have cut back our use of temporary heat, you know, we went from a peak of 12 million BTUs in that space, which was costing about $2,000 a day in natural gas, down to less than 4 million BTUs of heat now, as we have more windows in, as the weather's gotten nicer, things along those lines. Couple of things that have come up in construction, there's lots of pictures in here, you can see those are the Google Steps or the Grand Staircase, it's in the comments. There's lots of pictures in here. You can see those are the Google steps or the, the grand staircase that's in the commons. What's interesting about that is the center of it is made of what's called geof foam. It's just styrofoam. So they don't pour them solid full of concrete. They actually have styrofoam in the middle. It's just, it's a, basically a placeholder until the concrete sets up. So you don't have this massive chunk of concrete. So they're, these pictures are about a week old. This space looks drastically different even in, in a week. As you kind of keep working through, you're seeing the main office taking shape there, being studded up, keep going down, Tim. Corridors and the music space and the band areas. This space here is over by the, the main hallway, by science that, that, those are in. The science labs are actually almost all completely done now. Right there, you're seeing the furniture that was just delivered. So you'll be able to see the science labs. We're, we're actually running a little bit ahead of schedule on the remodel. And so some, like I said, these pictures are about a week and a half old. And so it's drastically different even from these spaces. Couple of things that have come up, just to give you a heads up, and Tim can keep scrolling through. But it was brought to our attention, the last week in February, first week, first, or, you know, about the first of March, we were talking about something related to the boilers. And Jim Stasco said, "You mean the oil backup boilers?" And they said, the contract said, "No, we've, these are propane backup boilers." And so Jim goes, "No, we talked about this in the design meeting. We wanted oil backup, because that's the system we currently have. And the reason we have a backup fuel source is because we're on what's, what's called interruptible gas service. So the gas company can call us basically at any point. And usually, rarely happens, but they can call us. And they give us two hours to basically shut off our natural gas and switch to backup fuel source, which in our case right now is fuel oil or kerosene. And so if some people say, "Well, why would you want to do that?" Well, they reduce our, our gas rate by about thirty percent to be willing to do this. So on average, doing that saves us about thirty thousand dollars a year in natural gas cost. And this year, for example, they didn't ask us to do it at all. I mean, sometimes they'll ask us to do it, and it'll be off for eight hours. Sometimes it'll be off for twenty hours. But, but it, it did get shut off up at Holton. We had to go on backup fuel up at Holton, and that was a couple of days. We had to go on backup fuel up there. But the reason I bring this up is because we don't have propane backup. And now there's supposedly six propane boilers coming. And the upcharge to go from, switch from propane backup to oil, heating oil backup, they're saying is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I said, "Well, that's just not acceptable." And I said, "What was the plan?" Because not only do we not have a propane system to back it up, what would happen is if we did go with the propane backup, one of the things they were going to have us do is three two-thousand gallon propane tanks that were going to have to be put on the backside of the high school. But they couldn't be close to the building because of the size. They had to be a hundred and some feet away from the building. So then we would have to find a spot for that. And all the other things that go with it. And that price tag was going to be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So needless to say, we had some interesting conversations. And they are back to the drawing board on some hybrid options and things like that, that they need to present to us of how we are going to remedy this situation. You know, always their response is, "Well, if it would have been in the original documents, you would have had to pay for it anyway." My response is always, "We wouldn't have had to pay that much." And so, so we're pushing back and forth on some things. Because, you know, as things come up, there's only so much contingency. And we're guarding our contingency right now pretty heavily. And so we don't want to necessarily take a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit to contingency. But at a thirty thousand dollar a year savings, it'd be awfully hard for us to not go with this interruptible service. I mean, if we go what's, what's called firm service, which would be like what people have in their house, where they never shut your natural gas off. I mean, essentially, it could cost us up to thirty thousand dollars more a year to heat that building. And so the payback on it is, is relatively quick. But, you know, had we known this a year ago, we would have cut more things out of the project. But now we're far enough in the project, there's not many things to cut. And, and so that's why there's been some pushback. I have put the hold on some of the terrazzo floors, because that's one of the biggest outstanding things we have right now, which is about one point two million dollars. Or a little less than one point two million. And looking at other areas, we can move from terrazzo to polished concrete to save some money, to help offset some, some costs. But we hope to have something presented to the board shortly on those. It's just, to say this kind of took the wind out of our sail a little bit, just as we were really starting to make progress on, on the project, is an understatement. So the rest of the project, I mean, with the exception of that, seems to be going, going as planned. But I will be keeping you up to date. On the twenty-sixth of March, we will have Bray and Kraus Anderson at that meeting. You'll be able to, to talk with both Bray and Kraus Anderson. They're here to answer questions and also kind of give a preview as we head into the last part of the project, the big summer push. A lot of the things that have concerned me, and I've, I've talked to both Bray and Kraus Anderson, is, is, you know, we're burning through contingency. And the majority of this is not on owner-directed request. You know, so like, for example, if we get, we get a part of the project done, like so, Area A, that, where Strive was at, and we're living in that part of the project, and all of a sudden realize, okay, one of the products we put in has not been a very good product, doesn't hold up as well as we would like. So we would maybe change it. We wouldn't continue to put it in the rest of the building. And so some of those things drive change orders or as things unfold. But there's been a lot of change orders that have been related to, you know, needing to change design stuff that aren't necessarily owner-corrected or owner-directed. And there's been, you know, change orders as it relates to facilitating the building process and things along those lines. And so, you know, I think they're probably not used to having a, a district probably push back as hard as we do. But I think without pushing back, you know, we would end up spending all of our contingency and probably end up having to cut and do all those types of things. And so, you know, I think that we will continue to, to push back. And, and kind of at this point, we're down to about seven hundred thousand dollars of contingency left. And we have a large remodel to go. And so we've had some pretty poignant conversations about those things. Tim and I have been working with them on, on narrowing, nailing down budget items and things along those lines. But what, what happens is you're, you're, you know, for example, you remember the board? We talked about the bees on stone below the track. And it was about a hundred thousand dollars to keep that. If you guys remember, we brought that to the board and said, "Well, at the time, that didn't seem like a big thing, because there was almost three million dollars in contingency." But had we known all these other things were going to happen, you know, we may have not have done those things. And that's, that's the thing that, that's the most challenging is, you know, asking them to, you know, try to give us all of the information versus pieces of the information in, in making the, making the decision. So, so they will be here on the twenty-sixth. And like I said, that, that meeting, that work session will be over at the high school. We'll start with a tour of the facility, because it is, it is, as many headaches as the building has been, it is turning out to be a beautiful, a building, and, and it'll be something that our community will be very proud of. So, construction-related items. If you have questions, we're still working through the wood and the auditorium issues and trying to get that solved. That's not totally resolved yet. The lighting on the aisles in the auditorium, we are getting that resolved. So there's two things that are happening. One, they're installing dimmer switches. And two, they're ordering larger hand armrests for the sides. And so those lights are supposed to be recessed up in the armrest, pointing down. Right now, they're recessed in the side panel pointing out. And so, you know, we're hoping to at least be able to dim them by the time the spring play happens. And that's Tracy, what, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of April, somewhere around there. Does that sound familiar? Yeah, but the, the, the end, you know, the final solution, you know, may take a little bit longer than that, because those are all custom-made armrests and things like that. So they admit that it's their error. We're not anticipating any cost associated with that at all. So, that's good. Any questions about construction? And if any board members ever want tours or anything like that, feel free to give me a call. And we can set up a time to go over there and, and walk and talk through the project. So.
Is there a construction meeting tomorrow?
There is not a construction meeting tomorrow. The next construction meeting is on the?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
So I was just going to piggyback on that. Following that construction meeting, could we have, and I assume this would be Kraus, but then to the extent that, you know, Bray assists in that, give us an update of where we stand with change orders? And have like a report that's given to board members by Thursday, preferably? So that we could, we could have that reviewed and then come ready with questions for Bray and Kraus on that Monday night work session?
Yeah, and what I'm planning on doing is with, with Bray and Kraus, I'd like the work orders, or the change orders to be broken out between district-directed, unforeseen circumstance, and just design, design coordination issues. And, and you know, and some of the stuff, and again, some of the stuff we, we're paid for anyway. It's just when you do it in a change order, you do it at a premium. And then, you know, the thing is, is, you know, if we're talking several millions of dollars, what that really means is, you know, they were really off on the, on the budgets, you know? Because we knew going to bid, we would be about a million dollars over. We, you know, we came, I think, right around a million, or a million eight over. And we cut through value engineering about two and a half million. So we actually, we actually started the project actually a million dollars under. You know, we added to contingency. And so to, to end up, you know, we ran into some big ticket items. The, the Bad Soils was a big ticket items for us on the, on the outside, running into all that topsoil that we didn't know was there, was an issue.
I, I like your plan on how to break it out.
I think that way, at least you have an idea of, of, you know, where some of these things are coming from.
I don't, yeah, for that third category of coordination error or whatever, slash, you know, subcontractor error, don't necessarily have to point fingers. But still, I think it's, as long as it's clear that this is not all on us deciding, changing our minds as far as quality of, of materials or anything like that.
That's correct. I mean, you understand the change order log's thirty-three pages long. So we'll break it down as we go through and, and how it works. And, you know, some of them are obviously deducts, and some of them are, more of them are adds and deducts. Otherwise, we wouldn't be where we're at. But I think it's important for the board to kind of have that. And, and we're going to start down that process tomorrow with them. And then I will tell them that this is, this is basically, this is a report that the board wants. And they both can weigh in on it, so they can either agree or agree to disagree on, you know, not necessarily the fault. But, you know, one of the things that I've said through the process, when, when I ask whose fault it is, it's not necessarily, we expect a check to accompany the issue. But the reason we want to understand whose issue it is, is so that we can fix it. So we don't continue to have the same issue over and over.
You want to go to the right party to fix it, as opposed to going to the wrong.
But I mean, not, not even go to the right party, but just if there's a systematic problem that's causing certain things to happen, we want to know what that is, so we can fix it, so we can nip that in the bud. And so, you know, trying to have those conversations. And I think, you know, the, the flow of construction has gotten much better. And Kraus Anderson has really put a lot more folks behind the construction process as far as the planning. And they've brought in their Six Sigma person to help them with process and things along those lines. Bray has added more people, I think. As we talked about, it's, it's always interesting, because when we interviewed these firms, all the firms, you know, tell you, "Hey, we do this all the time." And, and now, if you were to talk to the firms, they tell you this is one of the most complex projects they've ever done. So it's just kind of the way it goes. And, and, and I don't want to make it sound doom and gloom. It's not. There's a lot of wonderful things. It's just, there's a lot of challenges, and we're working through them. And I think in the end, the project's going to be amazing, and the facility's going to be amazing for our kids. But it's, there's a lot of pushing and pulling in order to get us to that point. So. Any other questions, construction-related?
Well, you mentioned about the next meeting, and we don't have on here president's report. So we can't really discuss it. But you mentioned the next meeting, and we're meeting at the high school. It's also that time of year when we do our school board, you know, the self-assessment. And we have this percept, school perceptions tool. I just wanted to point out that we've tried it different ways. This is like the fourth year, I think, we've been doing these. And we've done it where we give board members two months' lead time, and it still didn't necessarily get done on time. So now we have two weeks. We want these turned in a week from Friday. And so that, because we're basically running out of meetings. And unless we ask Sandy to come back in April, like, which we did with previous board members, that they come back for one meeting after they're not, you know, no longer officially on the board. But. Yes, that the school perception survey is also, there's a code. We did not write down who's got what code. I just had Tim randomly pass these out. We have two board members that aren't here. They'll be getting their surveys. So these are not traceable answers, but we will know whether we got all seven results back. And I'll follow up with Tim, and then Tim will follow up with each of you as a group, indicating whether we've got four results back, six results back, seven results back. But it's again, something, because we mentioned the next meeting, while there's going to be a fair share dedicated to construction. It's just that it's that time of year where we got to do our evaluations of both ourselves and our superintendent. That's our job as a board.
Yep, and I'll be getting you guys the, my written reflections here in the next couple of weeks, so that we can work through that in April.
All right, very good.
Oh, excuse me, but what color ink will you be using for that?
As long as you're not using red, I would appreciate that. So. Next item, April third, school board election. Just a reminder, school board election's April third. Polling places are open from seven in the morning till eight in the evening, is what I've been told. So.
Yeah, I think there's a few other offices that night as well.
There's quite a few other offices that, that are happening at that time. We have three seats open, and we have three people running. So just a reminder that make sure that you get out and vote on April third. The boundary updates. So a couple of things I want to touch on with the boundary update. Tracy's put together some different update stuff and some narratives for people to be able to look at. There is a tab on our district webpage at the top called Elementary Boundaries. So one of the things that people have to keep in mind is that although the committees and the meetings aren't starting until May, there's a lot of work that's being done right now between meeting with different parent groups. I met with actually Rivercrest Parent Group this afternoon and talked with them and answered questions that they had. We're in the process of putting together the committee recommendations, and I'll go through that in a minute. But the, really the document that you guys looked at at the last board meeting, which is the timeline, seems to be the one that's still holding together. The roles and responsibilities, Tracy's put that in there. It's more of kind of a summary of that PowerPoint that RSP had. And what it is, it's color-coded to the same folks that are on the, the other sheet that has the, you know, the timeline and who's going to be responsible for what. So one of the things that we've talked with different folks about, and I had my meeting today, is I try to remind them that we are in the very infant stages of this. If there is anybody telling you that there's been boundaries decided, or that, you know, any, any type of preconceived things, that's just not the case. I have not talked to RSP since the last meeting. I know they're gathering a lot of data and information from our district. And, and a lot of, so they can start to run their projections and things. So one thing I want to mention at this meeting, because some people, I think, were a little bit misled. I, I need to provide some feedback to RSP. So one of the things they did in their presentation is they gave some examples of what they can do for the board or what their boundaries are going to look like for the board. And I think, you know, just to show the level of detail. And they talked about contiguous versus non-contiguous boundaries, if you remember that. Well, they, they were just showing some examples, and they happened to use Hudson. Well, they, they just drew random lines on there. There wasn't anything with it. And I told them that, hey, maybe next time, just in those slides, just use a totally different district as an example. Because I think we had some people that came to the meeting and thought, "Oh, my gosh, see, there's already, there's already boundaries." And they literally are just random lines on a, on a map, just to show the level of detail compared to the level of detail we have now. So they just, they wanted to show how they're going to be able to provide that. But I think sometimes it'd be better to say, "Hey, here's a different district we've used." So, so if people have called you and say, "Hey, see, I told you the boundaries are already decided. We just wanted to, want to make sure we cleared, cleared that up." The other thing is, let's see here, you have the timeline on there, and we, we talked about that. The boundary committee. So one of the things, the, the boundary committee application. So one of the things, the, the boundary committee application, so this is going to get pushed out to all of our elementary parents. Tomorrow, Tracy, is that right? Is it tomorrow or Wednesday? Wednesday. So this is going to go out in a separate email, it's not going to be in a Thursday folder, but what it is, it's just going to be, it's going to go to every email, all of our elementary parents saying, you know, hey, if you'd like to be a part of the elementary bound, attendance boundary committee, here's a link to the application. What you see here is just kind of some background on it, Tim, if you keep scrolling down. What it is, is it's tied to a Google form, their name, their address, what municipality they, they reside in, school their children attend, and email, phone, and then, you know, some, some different stakeholder groups. And then, and then at the bottom, a little bit, you know, a little bit about themselves, why they're interested. So one of the things that, and I stressed it today with the parent group was, it, it's important for us to get a good geographic representation of parents on this committee. And so not only, everybody thinks, well, that just means you want people from every building. Well, it's more than that, because not only do we want parents from every building, obviously, which there's another list, did that get linked by chance? Okay, and I can, and I can talk from it. But we want to make sure that within those elementary boundaries, or each elementary boundary, we have geographic difference too. We don't want three neighbors, you know, let's say it's three neighbors at Willow and three neighbors at, at, you know, Rivercrest. We want to make sure we're trying to cover the district geographically the best we can. When we looked at, what, what we're looking at doing, and what we bring to the board for the April meeting, is the, the, the group representation would be, there'd be a parent group representative, one from every elementary school. So that would be somebody appointed by the PTO from each elementary school to serve on the committee. Then there would be two parents at large from every elementary school. So these would be parents that are filling out this, this item here. And again, we're trying to balance that geographic dispersion and things like that. We would have one teacher from each elementary school, each of the six elementary principals, myself, Dave, Tracy, Andrea and Tim, were the ones that have been working on this process. Municipality represent, representatives, which would be City of Hudson, someone from City Hudson, Village of North Hudson, Town of Hudson, Town of St. Joe and Town of Troy. We'd also be reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and Blake Frye, to have somebody from the chamber on it. We'd like to have two realtors slash developers beyond the committee as well. And then also Ellen Denzer, who's the St. Craig County Community Development Director, would like to see if we can reach out to her, have her Senate Representative as well. So I, in all, I think it's thirty-five or forty people, which is what, what they said they, there would be. If you remember correctly, their recommendation was to have the board come to meetings, but not have the board be a part of the committee, because they were worried that potentially people might not speak their mind on certain things. You know, so our, our plan is to show this to RSP, and if they say, yeah, this seems to be about what we've typically seen, then as we get the applications in, then our goal would be to come to the board at the April sixth, third? What, what meeting do we have in April? Is it the third? Hold on.
No, the tenth.
Oh, yeah, the tenth, yep. The, come to the board on the tenth and be able to say, okay, this is the recommended list for people on the committee, and then the board would actually take official action on that. And then it becomes a board appointing committee as it relates to open records and, and all these other different things that, that pertain to it. So that is, that is the, the plan of attack. And then that committee, the first committee meeting is, as you could see on the planning documents, is, is May eighth. So the committee will meet May eighth, and then the first public feedback or public forum will be May fifteenth, I believe, is that right? And so as we have documents, documents that are going to be given to the committee, documents that related to things, we will get them posted on the elementary boundary tab on the district's website, so that people have access to them and, and can know what's going on. What, what we're going to have to decide is where we host those meetings. You know, typically this room would be able to handle thirty or forty in table configurations, because we do it with professional development. The concern would be if we have a bunch of people that want to watch the meeting, because sometimes you can have spectators that want to watch, because it's technically a public meeting, just like this meeting here. So we would potentially look at, at hosting that meeting at a different location, potentially at Rivercrest, or, you know, kind of work through, work through some of those items, so.
Nick, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a process in place, or will there be one for choosing? You said there'd be a couple of parents from each school. What if you, what if twenty-five people from a building, parents fill out that thing? And then how are, how are you going to choose the two or three that are going to be on the committee? Are the criteria are going to be, so it's really clear, so nobody can say, I applied, so did she and she, and those two made it, but I didn't?
I, I think the number, the number one criteria is going to be dispersment of the geographic location. So like, for example, let's say the PTO appoints somebody that lives on your street, and then we have all these applications, we're probably not going to pick another person that lives on that street. We're going to try to pick somebody that lives in another region of that elementary boundary. That's going to be the first preference. And then, you know, I think one of the things that we'll probably work our way down, and we, we'll come up with a clearer set of guidelines, one of the things we'll look at is, okay, age of children, for example. So if you're an elementary parent, and you have, let's say, a fourth grader, for example, there's a strong possibility, or are going to be fourth grader next year, that there's a strong possibility, if the board decides to do a fifth grade grandfather clause, allow student, children stay in their school for their fifth grade, and your youngest child is in third grade, let's say this year, then we would give preference to people that have children under, you know, under third grade. And, you know, kind of keep working our way that way. Because if, if you currently have third grader, that's your youngest child, more than likely the boundary process may not impact you at all. Just depends on what, what the committee decides, or what the board decides. But based on RSP saying that, you know, typically they see a fifth grade kind of grandfather year with these things, that would mean basically if they're in third grade right now, they'll be in fourth grade next year, and then when the boundaries go into effect, they'll already be, they'll be going into fifth grade. So those are the kind of things that we'll look at. We'll outline for the board what was the process that we used to select the members of the committee and, and things like that. So that'll be presented when we present the committee as well.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any questions on boundary updates and things? So one of the things I said to Jamie, and, and he had said also is, just because there's not a public meeting going on, doesn't mean there's, there's not things going on. For example, like I said, gathering a lot of data, a lot of requests that way. I'm out attending parent group meetings and things along those lines. Right now, it's just trying to miss, you know, dispel rumors and things like that, because we just don't have a lot of information yet. But as more information comes out, there'll be more opportunities, you know, for those types of things, and, and for people to get involved.
Just one quick question. Nick, what is a common concern or question you're getting?
Well, only, I'm only one meeting in, but I think, you know, one of the questions has to do with boundary exceptions, and we're going to have to address that, because, you know, for example, this year alone, we had eighty-five, eighty-five new boundary exception requests this year alone, and they don't reapply every year. So, you know, so one of the things that can be difficult is, if you go through the process of redoing all the boundaries, and then everybody can just accept out of them, then it, it makes it very difficult for us to, to balance our elementaries. And so the board will have to make some, some decisions on what does that look like? What do current boundary exceptions look like? What do future boundary exceptions look like? People often ask us, what do I do? I want to apply for a boundary exception for next year. Will it be honored after next year? And we say, we don't know. And, and, you know, boundary exceptions are basically honored on a per space basis. So, and just because an older sibling was granted a boundary exception, doesn't guarantee a younger sibling to get into the same building. So, you know, our, you know, our thought is usually, you know, to, to be most consistent, if you go to school in the area in which you reside, you know, that's going to give you the best chance. But, you know, the boundaries will be changing. So we'll, we'll see. Also, people ask, are everybody's boundary changing, or is it only certain schools? And I said, I don't know. I haven't seen what RSP has presented yet. So I don't know if they have any, any ideas of how all six would change, if only some of the six, or, or how that works. Our goal is to accomplish, you know, get the, you know, the best balance we can, plan for future growth with impacting the least amount of people. I mean, that's kind of the goal. But sometimes what we think is the least amount of people, and what somebody else might think is the least amount of people, are not necessarily in the same, the same light, so. All right?
Well, I just, is there other comments about the boundary process? Yes?
Mr. President, two of the questions here, whatever, community stakeholder groups you represent. One of them is, I have preschool children. If you, if you only have preschool children, and another one is, I do not have children attending Hudson schools. I heard this was going to be going out via email to parents. I don't know how those folks would get that. But if, if you do live in the district and you're enrolling, open enrolling out, or you have preschool children, how could you weigh in on this?
This information will be posted on the website, plus we'll have a mailer going out prior to making the decision on.
This, this application?
Well, yes, the application's on the website, or will be on the website, and then we will also have the mailer that's going out into, to all our residents. So we'll let people know that this opportunity is available. Right. And then we'll probably be looking at also having Nick attend one of the moms groups, which would be another one of the stakeholder groups as far as reaching out to preschool-age families.
Okay, would there be a, I guess, a specific link, not just to visit the website, but to go directly to this application?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
When you say we, I mean, Tracy is basically scheduling me for this stuff, so. I didn't realize I was going to the moms groups till just now, so that's, we'll see how that goes.
Mr. President, just a question for Tracy. So you, Nick, you said that if there's two parents on the same street, then that won't work, so are we not including addresses on here at this point, or?
It, it was on, I think it was the second question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Up at the top.
Oh, okay.
But, and the thing is, is our, our goal is to get as much. But I mean, let's say we have one of our elementary schools, and there's only two people that fill it out, and they both happen to be by each other, then that's, that's, you know, kind of the way it's going to be. So, but yeah, no, we'll, we'll have it on there and, and work through it.
All right, any other comments? I guess, just in follow-up to the last meeting, I didn't know this until after the meeting, but we had one board member that was not on the mailing list and didn't get the materials that RSP put out in advance. And so while that's been corrected, it's, it was just kind of unfortunate. It might have reduced a little bit more of the confusion, if you will. But I have to say that it looks like RSP did a good job of capturing the discussion that we had on the eleven guiding principles, and took suggestions from board members on changing of wording. But again, I think the, what's evident is that the, the board did not want to dictate, what the committee could consider necessarily, or, you know, make any prejudice, you know, judgments, prejudging, you know, what might be criteria, or, or weighting of that criteria. So I don't know if there's other board members that have any input on that. But I, I thought that this is a very transparent process, one that obviously has to develop yet. But the timeline's been set, we're pretty firm in making sure that we have adequate time to discuss this, and that the public has really well-advanced notice of when these meetings are going to be held. So, anything else on that? All right. Do you still have one more report?
Now, I do have one more report, I'm sorry. And I did hear from Bruce. He did text and say that he was sorry, that he's had a travel change and was not able to make it. So he's away on business. Safety and, and security update, a couple of things we want to, want to touch on. So first of all, you know, in, in, in light of, of what has happened, obviously down in Florida with that most recent tragedy, but we've had obviously more than we'd like with the school shootings and school tragedies. I did meet with the new Chief of Police, Jeff Willem, and then our new St. Craig County Sheriff, Scott Knutson. I want to say it was about two weeks ago, and we discussed, kind of looking at some different options. And one of the things we talked about was bringing in our emergency personnel for, and head of emergency first responding, and our building administration, and kind of talked through, you know, our current plans. Are we still implementing best practice? Do we still feel pretty good about what we're, you know, our plan of attacks? And then also to start talking about maybe doing another large-scale drill like we had done at the high school about three years ago, but potentially switching that drill over to maybe the middle school, very complex, and, and looking at that, which would add a elementary and a middle school, you know, look at, at this thing, at these things. And so we do have a meeting coming up with them, I think it's about a week and a half out, or two weeks out, Tracy, is that right? Twenty-eighth. And so to look at those things, you know, a couple of things, as we, as sent out in the email that went out after the, the event in Florida, we, we are constantly looking at, at safety and security, and, and making sure we're trying to do the best we can with best practices, and, and where law enforcement would like to see us. And if they want to see major changes to how we respond to things, then if it's going to be quite a bit different than what we've done in the past, it may be that we would potentially have a closed board meeting, and, and we would bring the board up to speed to make sure you guys are aware of, of what's going on. One of the things, people ask us, well, we want to see your crisis plans and your crisis planning, and the thing is, is they are exempt from the open records law. We, we won't give them out. They are confidential, as we consider, because although we do drills and we do different things, how we respond to different crises and, and events with law enforcement, and how they respond is not something that we think needs to be out in the public, and the legislature, I think, tends to agree with us, and that's why they're considered exempt from the open records law. And so sometimes you will get parents that'll say, I want to know exactly what you guys are going to do in this situation, I want to know exactly what you're going to do in this situation. And although we can talk in generalities, but we usually don't give any specific pieces of information that may compromise how we respond, or how law enforcement may respond. So something to, to keep in mind. The next thing, as it relates to safety and security, I think some of you may be aware that there have been some planned walkouts and different things around the country, student walkouts, and people have often asked us, how are we going to respond? What I would share with the board is our plan is to follow board policy that was just passed in February, that the district does not endorse student walkouts, that we expect to have class as usual. I know some districts around us have chosen to sponsor the walkouts and things like that. And our thought process is, although we can appreciate individuals' right to protest and expression and things along those lines, we are not going to pick and choose which, which walkouts we would or would not support. The board policy that you passed last February is pretty clear, that the expectation the board has for the administration is to maintain a safe and orderly school environment. One of the things that we'll be sharing with, with, with parents is that, you know, every parent has the right to excuse their child any day, you know, that's their, that's their right to excuse their children from school, up to a certain amount of days every year, according to the law. But if somebody happens to, one of the, you know, kids tend to walk out without being excused from their parents, it'd be considered an unexcused absence while they're gone, and the appropriate consequences will, will follow as it relates to unexcused absences. We've met with the building principals, both at the middle school and the high school, to talk about it. And we're planning on sending a letter home to parents via email tomorrow evening, just reminding them that, you know, although we understand the civic rights people have to, to demonstrate and do those things, our job as, as educators is to educate kids and, and maintain an orderly environment. So we've also talked to staff about the process, you know, about the, you know, discussion or debate, and, you know, one of the things that we've talked to them about is, if they're going to talk about it, it's in classes where appropriate. So for example, you know, it wouldn't be out of the question if they were going to talk about school violence or things like that, and certain current events classes, or certain social studies classes, but it would be less than appropriate to be talking about it in algebra two, or Spanish class, you know. So it's where it's appropriate, and where it's within the context of what we're trying to teach in the curriculum. So that's kind of where we're sitting with that. I don't know if the board has any questions, but that email will be going out, going out tomorrow.
I, I have a comment. I know when you think of the word safety in school, the first thing you think of are the, you know, horrible events of, of live shootings and so on. But I also realize that our district has taken huge steps in terms of safety for our children, beginning with the fact that they don't have to pass between buildings in an exterior outdoor corridor, where easily would be an opportunity for harm to have come to them. And I know that from the outside, you can't see what we're doing yet, but we're putting in. And I know that from the outside, you can't see what we're doing yet, but we're putting into these huge fire doors and smoke barriers and everything, so I, you know, I, I hope when we have a chance to have an open house when we're done, that some of those safety features can be highlighted.
Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I'd like to thank you, Nick. The, the approach that you guys are taking on this, I, I am 100% behind, so thank you very much.
No, I think it, I appreciate the feedback. I think both building principals, you know, cabinet, we all, all felt the same way is that, you know, again, we, we love the civics learning options for kids, we, we like them, you know, voicing their opinions, but at the end of the day, we don't wanna get into the business of picking and choosing which, which walkouts we wanna support and which ones we don't. And so we'll carry on and follow board policy as you guys approved last year. Carrie?
I also fully agree with administration's response and the fact that, that you're emphasizing the responsibility. I would also support families who choose to, to recognize legislators' lack of responsibility by not acting on this, so, but I do fully agree with the administration.
Absolutely. Any other comments, then? And I just, this being my, getting, coming to the close of my fifth year on the board, I mean, we've had safety and security updates from our superintendent, I think, virtually every year that we've been on the board, and Sandy's been on longer than I have, because it's, it's a constantly evolving, it's something that we have tried to address, whether it's, you know, through budgetary items and capital improvements, policies, but we, we do have the safety and security of the children, you know, at the foremost, and while there may be unfortunate national incidents, I think that we have to do, you know, what we're in the business of doing, educating our students and doing it in a safe and secure environment. So I, I also applaud the administration on, on the course we've, we've set, so. Any other comments? Then moving on to topics for action, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the language that's on the screen. We didn't print it out, but if one of the board members, uh...
I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer will be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $7,877,416. Seven million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
All right, motion by Sandy, second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the consent items are approved, and do we have any resignation, or retirements to recognize?
We have some support staff retirements, but we can certainly talk about those more, the recognition make, which will be coming up on April 13th.
All right, very good. Then we move on to second reading of part two of the personnel policies. We've already approved part one, and we've had a first reading. We've had lengthy discussion at work sessions on these, but essentially, I think it's four policies, or... Yeah, four policies total?
Four policies in this item, yes.
But pretty important ones, and we've had lots of discussion, but is there any further comment, questions from any board members? If not, would entertain a motion to approve.
Were you nodding to me, Carrie? Okay, I move that we approve the policies. I, I don't remember the numbers. Do I have to name the numbers, or?
The second part.
Second part, I approve.
Second reading and a second part.
Yep.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, and yeah, we've, we've covered these usually in groups. This is actually a fairly small group, but lots of, lots contained within. Some of the parts that we've approved in different sections, it could be 10, 12 policies at a time, but this is a lot of work, and I have to say, really good job, because it's a comprehensive thing to do. This is on a five-year cycle, so we'll be seeing these same policies being reviewed in five years, but it's the only way to do it comprehensively and do it, do it well, so. Is there any other comments? Yeah, I think we had the alcohol and drug-free workforce, staff conduct, the social media, and staff communications and responsibilities associated with those. Pretty important stuff, but again, things that never would've been dreamt of in 1990 when a lot of the policies that we're reviewing now were, were first written. Hearing none, all those in favor of the second reading of part two of the personnel policies, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those policies are approved upon that second reading. We're ready to move on to the next section, which I'm sure we'll get to in our work sessions. Otherwise, staffing recommendations, another item that was on our last work session, discussed in, in a lot of length with lots of questions being fired at the administration. I'll turn it over to Andrea to kinda just summarize what the recommendation of administration is, and maybe what has been addressed since our work session to address the concerns of board members.
Sure. And what we've done is we've differentiated the document a little differently to separate the referendum-related custodial positions onto the, the second page. So this is just the non-referendum-related, not previously approved positions. And so just quickly, the second shift custodial supervisor, that would be a 1.0 FTE. There'd be a floater custodian, another 1.0 FTE with estimated costs, including the benefits. Then the technical support specialist, we clarified here that it's a .82 increase to the position. The overall FTE would be a 1.0, but it's an existing position, so it would be an increase substantially to the position of a .82 FTE. And then associate prin, associate principal, it would be a one-year-only position, and it would be primarily centered at, well, it would be centered at Rivercrest and Rock, have some flexibility to be located at the two buildings. And we have the estimated salary of $88,000 with a 212-day contract, so the, the number of days would be equivalent to like a dean of students, number of contract days, as compared to our other associate principals at the middle school, high school are 260. I know there were several questions about the associate principal contr, or that, that position in particular, and we can, I'll go through the summary quick, and then we can certainly answer more questions there. A Spanish teacher, it's a .4 increase. We did clarify the cost of that to make it more reflective of the actual cost, so it would be the 26,000, so going from a .6, adding a .4 onto that, so then it'd be a 1.0 position. Art teacher, this is a reinstatement of a prior layoff. Their numbers have gone up at the high school, so our person who had been reduced to a .8 will now be reinstated with, subject to this approval, by the .2, and that's reflected at 16,000. Cafe operation support, this would be a nutrition services position located at the high school, again, to operate the new cafe at the high school. And then the reduction would be the elementary teacher, because of the overall reduction in sections at the elementary, and then we modified that cost to, to be more, less specific to people and more specific to the overall costs, so that's $66,000 of a reduction. So the estimated total cost would be $326,000.
Couple of things to put in here. These are not salaries of people, these are total costs to the district, so just so people understand, insurance cost alone is about $18,000, and then you have FICA, and then you also have WRS on top of that, the employer contribution. So, you know, for example, the associate principal's salary is 88,000, but there's about $30,000 worth of, of additional costs that are associated with that position, and that happens with a lot of our positions. Same thing with our custodian floater, you know, of the 61,000, there's 18 of it in insurance, plus WRS, plus FICA and those things. So I just wanna make sure people understand that, you know, these are not the salaries that you're proving, these would be total costs to the district. The other thing I wanna make sure you have a handle on is the cafe operation support would be a nutrition fund position, and so that would not be tied necessarily to general fund, so we would expect that that position would be paid for with proceeds from the cafe. But we wanted to list it just so that it is part of that as well. The four previously approved positions with the referendum, those are the custodial positions. We want to make sure that everybody is still on board with that and understands that we talked about that. This is, this is not any bait and switch or anything, all the way from the very beginning of the referendum. We talked about a half a million dollars worth of additional operating expenses related to the referendum. We think it's gonna be actually less than that. We're actually thinking we're probably gonna be better than that. But just because our utilities, I think, are coming in better and the number of people that we need. So, one thing to keep in mind, and we talked about this with the associate principal, is this is a one-year-only on the associate principal, and then after next year also, we will be dropping one associate principal at the high school because the construction's over. So I, I don't want the board to think that we've forgotten about that and that that position is just gonna stay on. We will be reducing down one assistant principal at the high school. So we aren't just always an add-add, so we do also have some deducts on occasion.
Any other comments, questions, or motion, yes?
Mr. President?
Sandy.
I look at these numbers and I, the associate principal, and I fully understand that it's 80,000 for the wages and the rest is the benefits. I've been on this board six years, and every year that I have been on the board, the wage and salary column in our budget has increased by over a million dollars every year. When I think about the taxpayer who has to pay for all of this, in addition to paying for our new buildings, which they voted for, I get a little, I get a little concerned. The associate principal position on here is the one that's got me the most concerned at this point. First of all, I did some research. The Hudson median income, as reported by the city of Hudson residents to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue for 2016, is $49,853. That's the city of Hudson. The town of Hudson median income, as reported to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue for 2016, is $50,985. Now that's a long ways from what you guys are all making. I know you're all well over 100,000, but that... People in this kind of income bracket have a problem paying their taxes. And every time we add more stuff into this wage and salary budget item, our school district taxes have to go up to pay for it. Last year, in 2016, on my tax bill, the school portion of my tax went up 18.9%. That shows on my tax bill. In the last tax bill for 2017, the school portion went up 7.7%. Those were the biggest increases on both of those years, tax bills, except for the town of Hudson, which went up 47%. Anybody who live in the town of Hudson here, you all know what happened there.
I live there.
My, my point is, the school district is not the only taxing entity on our tax bills. And even though we're under levy and we try to watch the money and we try to do it right, you've got a lot of other taxing entities on these tax bills that are continuing to go up, up, up also. When this happens, it, it gets to the point where people have a major problem handling the taxes, and, and we add, you know, $118,000 for an assistant principal seems like nothing compared to our budget, and it really isn't. But I really question why we need this. The enrollment at Rivercrest in 2016 was 535 students, and now it's 533, according to the reports that I have here. The enrollment at EP Rock in 2016 was 541 students, and now it's 516. So with enrollments going down, with the elimination of the high school principal next year, with the boundary redoing, is it in the intention to move some of these students around once the boundaries are redone and possibly relieve some of that enrollment at those two buildings because of the boundary changes?
Yeah, so that's part of why it's a one-year-only position.
But I, I'm not sure I buy a one-year-only.
Well...
These positions are created and then they end up staying.
Well, it's, it's kinda like, it's kinda like the high school position where, you know, that was added two years ago, and I'm still telling you, it's, it's going away at, at the end of next year. I mean, I, you know, I, I guess, the, you know, the biggest piece that has happened is obviously the, the performance pay structure and the amount of time and effort it takes to do that. But yeah, the goal, and, and I think everybody was at the meeting on, you know, two weeks ago, would be to try to balance these buildings out more as part of our boundary things, and that's why we wanna make sure it's a one-year-only contract, so that we don't get tied into a multi-year contract if not needed, you know, and, and that's why...
If we've been getting along without this assistant principal for these years, and now our enrollments in both of those buildings are down, why do we need to have the assistant principal for only one year?
I think with the introduction, as well, with the support staff pay for performance, where the evaluation process there is gonna be much more time-intensive than it ever has been up to this point, and it'll be our proposal that we're gonna be bringing forward in a couple of weeks, you'll see as a brand-new evaluation system for support staff, and then it links it automatically to the pay, which will be effective for this next year. And so putting that on top of our principals, who we're hearing from certainly at Rivercrest and Rock, that to balance the workload with the formal observations, informal observations, all the requirements associated with educator effectiveness, to put one more thing on their plate, it's gonna break it. I mean, I'm really concerned about their workload, and we have two excellent principals at those buildings, and we've been hearing for years, and now this one is kinda the camel, or the straw that broke the camel's back. One more thing placed upon them, I don't know how they will get it done.
Are you saying it's the, the review process for the support help that's causing the problem?
The last, this is the last thing that's now being put on them, because the teachers, the educator effectiveness system alone was putting a great deal of strain, and I think Dave and I have heard a lot from the principals about that strain, and then to put one more thing on top of it as well for next year, in my opinion, is too much for those principals.
And, and how will that change next year, then?
Well, the following year?
You say it's a one-year position?
It'd be one year, with the rebalancing of the boundaries. So if we're able to balance out the buildings differently, so these are not the top-heavy buildings, so they're not the ones that are all the four sections, then there would be less of a need. But we also go through, oh, Dave?
I'm sorry, I'll share some specific data with you. When we look at the staff evaluation for certified staff, that's just an indication of overall workload. It's not everything, but it is significant. And right now, EP Rock is at a ratio of one evaluator for every 46, that's just certified staff. That doesn't include support staff. Rivercrest is at 1 to 49, the mean is about 38, and we have a low of, of 26 in there. So, and, and that has been consistent, you know, they've been operating at those levels. And as we mentioned last time, too, this isn't, it's not a brand-new idea, it's just the time we felt right to bring it forward. But understand your concerns, I just wanted to share that specific data with you.
The other thing would be, Sandy, and you brought up, so if we balance the elementaries more, then the staff's balanced, and that's why then this position's potentially not needed down the road, because, you know, one of the things that would happen with balancing elementaries, there may be fewer staff in those two buildings. You know, if their enrollment goes down, then their staffing goes down, then it starts to become a little bit more of a, you know, a ratio. I mean, I, I think, you know, everybody keeps telling us, "Why can't you be more like the private sector and pay per performance and things like that?" But the private sector does not have direct report ratios of 1 to 40, or to 1 to 50. I mean, they just don't. And not only that, but our educator effectiveness program, you won't, you won't find anything, I don't believe, in the private sector that's as extensive and requiring as much time as the educator effectiveness program with the reflections and the observations and all those things. And so if we wanna be more like private sector and have more performance-based opportunities, we have to have people to evaluate these folks, and we, you know, we have more than just teachers. We have, and all of a sudden, we'd be putting associates on performance pay, and custodians on performance pay, and secretaries on performance pay, and, you know, crossing guards, I mean, just an infinite, you know, just a lot more people on performance pay, and in these buildings, they, they need help. I mean, that's the bottom line, is they, they need help to be able to get all this done. And, you know, we, we hope that with the re-boundary, we're able to balance the buildings out more. It's a one-year position, and then all of a sudden, you know, that following year, there'd be two assistant principals dropping off their roles. There'd be the one at the elementary and the high school. I think, as you can see, with the elementary teaching position, we brought, dropping a position this year. Last year, I think we brought, we dropped three, four positions last year. If we don't need them, one thing Andrea's done a nice job of is, we're, we're not just carrying positions. You know, one of the things we've... You know, one of the things we've talked about a lot is our primary job is to educate kids. We, we're not an employment agency. We're, we employ people to educate kids. So although sometimes those conversations are difficult when you have to tell people they don't have a job or they're no longer needed, it's, it's because we, we really try to look at, you know, what is the minimum we need in order to get some of these things done? And um, you know, that's, that's why this is brought, this is why it's brought forward. Is it, is it great timing? I, I don't know. I mean, it, it's, I, I'm right there with you. I'm in the town of Hudson. Mike, and you know my story behind them reassessing my house. Uh, we went up fifty percent on top of it all. And so I, I, I agree with you. I mean, it's, it's not great, and the state's formula is not great for us either. But um, my concern with the associate principal is we won't, we won't get the level of performance evaluation that the board would like if people are just glazing over it.
When would this position start?
So this would be a minimal, or this would be a uh, less than, less than year-round position. So it would start in August, and then they would be done in June. So they wouldn't go all summer like our other assistant principals. Uh, 'cause we didn't, there, there's just, there's not enough for them to do in the summer. And so again, I, I think we tried to look at a pretty balanced approach of i- if we would've came to you with a full-time assistant principal at the elementary twelve-month contract, I, I would say, Nick, you need to go back to the drawing board because what are they gonna do all summer? And so that's what we've, that's what we've done. We've eliminated. And then what we've done for salary, we basically took, I think, the middle school assistant principal's salary. We figured out the per diem rate, divided it by two-hundred-and-sixty, times that by two-hundred and, two-hundred-and-twelve days, and that's how we got the salary. I mean, so it's a prorated amount uh, based on the number of days worked compared to our other assistant principals.
Carrie, did you have a question?
Uh, Dave, admittedly, I just had to Google mean, but I was right on mean mode and uh, median. Uh, for the mean, I'm guessing that you included the forty-six and, one to forty-six and one to forty-nine to get the thirty-eight average. Uh, what if you take out the two outliers? What is the uh, mean?
Thirty-four, thirty-four point five.
Okay, so that's actually what it's, their workload is comparing to?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And if we add, just, if we would add those, uh, the point five to each, it would bring it down to thirty-one and thirty-three at those two buildings.
And one other thing in terms of our constant evaluation of our buildings, we did just have, was it three or four-hour meeting today looking at, um, with some of the elementaries that are going down in enrollment, how do we balance out the staffing across the buildings? And so it's always, it's a dynamic conversation that we continue to have, and we're looking at additional cuts when possible to make sure that we ensure um, proper, you know, um, education and supervision of students, but not maintain positions when not needed. So it is a constant process.
So for example, North Hudson has declined in students. And so last year when they declined in students, we reduced the amount of PE.
Yes.
Physical education in that building. So to make it be more in line with the amount of PE that we would have in other buildings. So those are some of the conversations that we're having as we're working through. And sometimes what happens is one building goes down, another building goes up, so it's a reallocation from the building. They get moved, and they're part, part day in one building, part day in the other, and we kinda work through that. So um, our, our goal is, our goal is to run as efficient as we possibly can so that when we come to you with these things, you can feel pretty confident that we're not going to try to sneak one by you. I mean, that's, that's, that's our goal, is to be as transparent as possible with it.
And so this position would start in August and run through June?
June.
Yeah.
Two-hundred-and-twelve days, yeah, from the August start date.
All right.
I just wanna say that I um, kind of ag- agree with Sandy's concerns about, because what we've seen, you know, and we, it happens, it can happen gradually over the years. We add uh, administration and we add um, positions at different. And I wanna see that there's some justification for it. And in this case, I, I, what leans me towards supporting the administration's recommendation is first of all, the track record that we've had in trying to hold the line on positions and balancing positions at different uh, schools that we have, removing sections, which is a reduction of sections is in this recommendation. And the fact that it is gonna be temporary because we have demographics that are gonna be coming out. Most recent demographics we had was from two thousand, was that fourteen, Dave? When we, we had the PST and we had our demographer. And so now it's two thousand eighteen, so those numbers are gonna be updated. I think that's gonna weigh in the decision of whether this would, you know, be continued. But I wanna see also fairness in what we're expecting from, we have, we have only one high school principal. We have only one middle school principal. We've got associates at those buildings 'cause they're large. We have the largest middle, three-grade middle school in the state of Wisconsin. But we have six elementary schools that have quite a range in enrollments. And as far as I know, we're not paying our elementary school teachers based on enrollment at their various schools. We pay them the same. And so we're asking some, a few, in this case, principals to do a lot more than maybe what their cohorts are doing, and being able to do the job well. So if we end up balancing some enrollments, reducing staffing so that we don't have this ratio that Dave was quoting as far as evaluations going on, I mean, we don't, I, I think we wanna guard against having that glossing-over effect that Dr. Nick referred to in these evaluations just because of pure time. So I guess with all that having been said, I think that the administration's recommendation, being a temporary one, one that is unlimited, not something that's set in stone for in perpetuity, but I, I am skeptical 'cause I, sometimes that's the way some of these positions get their foothold and as they say, they're gonna be temporary at the beginning, and then they become permanent. But um, I think this is one that would definitely be up for reevaluation because we have different factors that are going on. But um, I've supported a pay-for-performance system for um, staff, whether that's certified teaching staff, or whether it's support staff, or whether it's administration. And if we're going to have that system, we need to, to support it with good evaluations. Otherwise, it's a worthless system, so. Do we have any other comments or is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
The fact that this is, you're telling me this is gonna be temporary, that, one year, that isn't, the last time we talked about this, that wasn't mentioned. So I'm feeling much better about that. Okay? I understand the need. I will support this this year, but I will tell you that if, I'm not gonna be on this board next year, but.
We'll be back.
I'll be right back here in that audience. If this position, uh, if this problem isn't resolved through reboundring and um, other things, next year when this comes up, I'll be sitting out there, and then I'll be speaking to you during the public session. I promise I'll be nice. But you cannot understand my concern. I mean, I, I've seen the, the budget go up for wages and salaries every single year. And, and if we do what you're proposing here with this five-hundred-and-something, and then you go through with the same automatic two to three or three-and-a-half percent raises that I've seen every single year, we're gonna be another million and a half or a million point eight up next year in the wages and benefits budget. And it just, it, it just gets to be um, an obscene number every single year. And I understand, we have a lot of employees, but it's a lot of money. And when I see forty thousand, forty-eight thousand, fifty thousand as median incomes, I, I know these people. I've sold houses to them. They have a problem paying taxes. My taxes have gone up a thousand dollars in two years because of this and because of the town of Hudson. You wanna move? We're gonna sell our houses in the town of Hudson.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, so I, I will get behind this with the understanding that it is for one year. That makes me feel much better than, than last, the last time we talked about this. And I just have one question. When I was pulling up information for this today, and I went on our website, and it said that on the web that we have five thousand five hundred and thirteen students, but the report from January of this year, the DPI total say five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. So is there a reason why those two figures would be different? Because I haven't updated it yet. Oh, that's on me.
So we're up, yeah, we're up a couple hundred kids this year.
That, that's the only explanation. That's, I wasn't sure if there was a different reason why that might not be um, accurate. So, all right, thank you. Thank you for the discussion and for helping me clear up my head.
Yeah, and I, there was one other number as far as this fairness among the different staff in the different buildings. So, and I'm rounding, but we have over thirteen hundred students at the middle school, roughly eighteen hundred at the high school. And with that number of fifty-six hundred, that leaves roughly twenty-four hundred some at the elementary school and um, preschool. So in the, right now the preschool, we only have two sections that are in our buildings. Otherwise, everything is at, um, is off-site. So when we get down to just the K through five students, we got roughly somewhere between a thousand and eleven hundred at two buildings, and then we've got twelve hundred at the other four buildings. And so if we start talking about the ratios, you add a halftime associate at each of those two large buildings, it kinda evens out the workload among all the elementary school principals. Is that, do I have that right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for the discussion.
And Jamie, you just gave a visual. That was wonderful.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Uh, it was interesting when you said that, you know, in the private sector, you'd like it more like the private sector, that there are no situations where it's one evaluation per forty-six or forty-nine employees, but that also teachers don't have, or other private sector employees don't have all the steps and documentation and all the proof that they need to show. I'm, I'm guessing teachers would be fine with some of that lesson as well.
You're absolutely right.
Just to get a plug-in for the teachers.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And, and, and this is something that comes up with TSS, for example, and they equate TSS to educator effectiveness, and we remind them that the state law is educator effectiveness. So that even if TSS did not exist, they'd still have to jump through and do all those different things. And so I, I agree. I mean, it, it is, it is a very burdensome, a very cumbersome evaluation system. And uh, when you start getting the evaluation ratios as high as we get them, I mean, it is, it is hard. And I think where the building principals get nervous is because now it's tied to pay. They wanna make sure they give good feedback. They wanna make sure that um, teachers are, are getting what they deserve, both good and sometimes not so good. And so um, yeah, it's, it's uh, it's, it's an interesting process because as I talk to my wife who works in the private sector, she just sometimes scratches her head and wonders why we do what we do. But since sometimes we don't get a choice, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move to accept the staffing recommendations for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen?
And that's the entire uh, recommendations, including the one uh, positions previously discussed with regard to the referendum?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Got it in just under the wire, otherwise it was gonna die for lack of a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Again, thank you for the discussion and for the explanation and your patience. I know that we fired, probably this has been the most discussed topics that we've had uh, um, since the referendum.
It's nice to talk about this instead of construction for a change, believe me. It's, it's welcome discussion.
Well, speaking of facilities, next up on the agenda, items for action is enhanced field maintenance request. And is this Tim Erickson?
This would be me.
Okay.
As cryptic as that title is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, you've seen this before, um, a few months ago. But uh, what we did was reconnect with the Hudson Boosters, um, who requested, initially requested this uh, this enhanced maintenance to the fields. You know, and I think it's important to remember, uh, the fields that you're looking at here are fields that we maintain for FIAD. We maintain them for that primary purpose and to meet some of our, some of our other curricular needs. So sometimes we've got groups that come in that, you know, such as boosters and lacrosse that would like a little bit different type of field maintenance. So um, I, I've had discussions with both Brent Heding, uh, who's the president of the Hudson Boosters, and Roger Heath, president of Hudson Area Lacrosse Association, uh, because that was what we really needed to do, is make sure both groups were in agreement uh, with these new proposed field rental rates. Uh, and they are in agreement uh, going forward, that they'd be willing to pay these rates in exchange for the, the different activities up there. And I, I won't go into those in a lot of detail. But um, so for example, if you look down under that, that highlighted area of proposed field use fee, so at Rock, um, you'd be looking at one hundred dollars per field. So Rock's got two baseball fields. Um, if they use two of those fields, they'd be looking at a two-hundred-dollar charge. Currently, um, without those other maintenance pieces in, um, the groups are paying ten dollars per day per field. So, you know, it's a, it's a substantial increase, um, but it's one they felt would be worth it to get the additional playing surfaces that they're, that they're desiring here, so.
They came, I mean, just so everybody's clear, they, they came to us with this. This wasn't the district saying, hey, we wanna, we wanna, you know, go after fees. 'Cause if you remember, we just set fees not more than probably eight months ago. And the booster group said, hey, we want better fields. We said it's gonna cost more. They said, we'll pay more. And then that's where Tim, Tim put this up. So I just, I wanna make sure, it's going from ten dollars to a hundred dollars for these people, and they're like, wow, what are you guys doing? I mean, it is purely to cover the costs associated with, with the things that they would like to see done.
That's right.
All right, just to clarify on this table then, number of rent events, you've got it broken down by site, the four different sites there. A rent event is, that basically means per field. So if a particular facility has three fields and they play two games on each field, so that would be six events in, in that one day.
Right, yeah. Nope, nope, it's, it's per day.
So, right, it's, yeah, per day, so per day.
Per field.
An event is per day, per field.
So they could play five games on one field and just pay one rental then?
Right, if they rented, so if they rent, for example, they could rent it for three hours, they could rent it for eight hours in that day, and they're gonna pay that one fee.
All right, but it is a per field.
But it is a per field, so yeah, so if they rent two fields, it's, in this case, under Rock, it's one hundred dollars times two, so it'd be two hundred dollars.
Per day though.
Per day, that's right.
So if they were gonna run fifteen games on that between the two fields in the day, then it's still the two hundred dollars. If they're gonna run two games on it, it's still two hundred dollars.
But these fees are just dictated by, by use. The, the per-event use fee goes substantially up for EP Rock, but that's because they have a lot fewer events. At Holton, the overall cost for the enhanced maintenance is actually five, a thousand dollars more. But um, the per-use fee is less than half, and that's just because you don't have as many events at EP Rock.
Yeah, driven by events and driven by, you know, if you look at, you know, at North Hudson, they've got the least amount additional cost there for that additional field maintenance, and they've got the most uses. So theirs is gonna be accordingly, it's gonna be quite a bit lower.
But, all right, is there any other questions on this? Heather?
Yeah, Mr. President, so I'm curious, do they talk at all about how this is gonna impact the cost to families who are participating in youth sports? Because as we pointed out, that's a pretty significant increase that has to be spread out across those players.
Yeah, that isn't a, that is not a discussion that I've had with the two organizations, but they've worked that out. They, they have said they've looked, Brent said, we went back, we looked at our budget, went back, talked to our board again about the fees, and we feel that it's, it's fine, so. And Roger was in agreement also, but I, I don't, we don't really get into what their fees are because they're a totally separate organization.
And so would we set these fees annually as the use changes? Is that, is that the idea?
Right, we'll look at these annually, we'll look at the costs that we're putting in each field, and we'll review those annually.
And again, this probably predates your coming on the board, Heather. But one of the items was that we clearly didn't want to be a profit center, making money off the community. But conversely, we also don't wanna be subsidizing these other category-two organizations in what they're getting either. So what we wanna do is have the fees roughly approximate the costs. And here, we're doing a little bit of rounding, 'cause we're rounding down two dollars from the estimated cost for Holton and up one dollar at North Hudson, but these aren't substantial. Attempt to approximate what we're expecting the cost to be, and this will be reevaluated then, once we have actual numbers come in.
That's right, we'll have to follow up on this every year, and every year we will readjust the rates based on uh, usage and the cost to maintain the fields.
And, and understand that these aren't the total cost. I mean, so we have additional fees. I mean, these are just, the, the seventy-two sixty-seven at EP Rock is additional.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just the four additional fertilizer applications.
So we already are mowing it once a week. So now we go, so that's our cost, it's not even reflected in these fees. We, I mean, then we'll mow it a second time a week, and that's reflecting. So one thing, and we talked about this with the fees, not, you know, we don't make money on this. And if we actually included all of the costs associated with our facilities, whether it be to turn the lights on for them, to air-condition them, to heat them, do all these different things, whether it be inside, outside, it's, I mean, it's not a huge loss, but it's, it's, this is by no means a profit center for us.
Right, the ten, yeah, the ten. Right. The ten, yeah, the ten dollars didn't cover much more than handling some paperwork and scheduling and that type of thing. So, um, yeah, those initial costs prior to these being added on were, you know, it was a pretty reasonable fee. And, and too, if we, you know, we look comparability, comparability-wise too, at our neighbors and what's being charged there. And our rates, um, you know, set these aside, but our rates are, are pretty low. So, um, we're not, certainly not like Nick said, we're not trying to create a profit center here. We're just trying to recover costs.
Any, uh, further questions or motion to approve?
Uh, move to approve the suggested changes.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion, a second. And just recap that this is a proposal that's been run by the two organizations and that they've agreed to this. So we're not forcing this on anyone against their will.
No, this is, this is a discussion and questions had been asked several times to make sure that everybody's in agreement and, and going forward with this. Yeah. We, I, I said we weren't going to bring it to the board unless they were all in agreement. So.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion passes. Next up is nutrition services. It should be Tim also. And we had an extensive report, uh, at our last work session.
I was just going to read through that again.
And, uh, yeah, I hope you can spare us that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we will spare you that. So, yeah. But, and, and actually, directly related to that report and that two-year action plan that we put together for nutrition services, um, this, this is that request that, that you did see in the report where we were looking at a fifteen cent price increase. And so rather than to get into all the detail, Peggy's provided a lot of good rationale for the increase. Um, and if you go down to that bottom box there and look at the elementary and middle and high school lunch prices, so for, these are for eighteen nineteen. And if you compare those to the seventeen, eighteen CISA average, uh, we're still below that. But we, we do need to raise prices up. We haven't, uh, we did the federally mandated price increase of ten cents one time in the last five years. And I think we had a fi- roughly a five cent prior to that. Um, we have, we have kept the prices low, um, but we do need to, to reinvest in the program. So, um, this is what we're proposing is the fifteen cent increase.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I move to accept these, uh, increases in these prices as indicated in this document.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Um, thank you for putting that out there right, right away. I had one question, and that is, uh, with the breakfast at the secondary level, um, you know, the other, uh, the lunches are going up fifteen cents. Why is breakfast only ten when we're still a nickel under the seventeen, eighteen CISA average price? Why wouldn't that go up fifteen?
It's, you know, breakfast as secondary is a relatively small program right now, and, and it's holding its own. So we really wanted to focus on the lunches. That's where the larger dollars are, where the biggest impacts could be.
All right. That, that's an explanation. All right. Any other questions for this, on this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion to, uh, adopt the recommended price increases and this pricing for eighteen nineteen is approved. All right. Last on the action items is school age care fees.
I'll be taking that one. Um, so what you have here is a rationale of why we're looking at raising our school age care fees. Um, and if you recall, school age care is within the Fund Eighty, um, part of the budget. So, um, these are not tax dollars. This is, uh, this program is provided to families, uh, through that fee. Um, and starting with Andrea's direction, the school age care program started to move toward meeting all of the requirements that state licensing requires for, uh, childcare programming. And a big part of that for us is making sure that all of our staff have the training, um, that's required for that licensing and also making sure that we have the correct ratios of staff to students in our care. Um, and so we're looking at increasing that fee, um, that fifty cents, which is still well below, um, our next closest provider. Um, and that is Camp St. Croix. And Camp St. Croix is currently at eight seventy-five for a session. And just so you know, a session would be like a morning session. So as a family, I could drop my child off at six in the morning and have my child in care until nine. And it's that seven dollars and currently seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So it's not an hourly rate. That's a session rate. So there's a session in the morning and a session in the afternoon. Um, and then there's also the summer care, um, fees that are here. So basically what, um, we're asking is that increase for the fee to help us cover, um, additional cost for, um, salaries for our school age care caregivers and leads. Um, currently, the leads are under what, um, our comps are. Um, and then also with our caregivers, um, the job is set up, so it's a split shift. So caregivers come in the morning and they come in the afternoon, um, which makes it a bit challenging for us, or actually quite a bit challenging this year because we have operated this full year without being able to fill all of our positions as we would like. Um, so trying to create a program that would provide some incentive, um, to bring more folks, um, into the program, um, at a high, high level of learning for those individuals who are providing care.
Questions? And this isn't the first time we've talked about this either. Um, each year, we look at our costs and again, we're not trying to be a profit center.
Correct.
Um, but we also don't want to be substantially under the market and, um, you know, imposing costs on the taxpayers, um, you know, to benefit individual fa- families that take advantage of, of this, um, opportunity. So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we accept these, uh, increased, uh, costs, the proposed costs as listed in this document. And are we also, um, approving the raises to the employees in this document also? Or is that going to be a different thing? I, I will include that the raise, the raises for these employees get what, what you have listed here, to the thirteen seventy-five and the fifteen dollars an hour for the leads.
And just, um, just as a follow-up, so those fees would go into effect for the summer program, not immediately. And the salaries would be July when we do our typical.
Changeover.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification and, uh, understanding that this has nothing to do with the general budget. This is all self-supporting.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Sandy, second by Carrie. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And we have completed our action, agenda items. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.